Waiting for my clock to flip. Still 12:59, this is the longest 12:59. There we go, one o'clock. All right, being as it is one o'clock, we're going to call the afternoon meeting of the Click Tech County Board of Commissioners to order. Let the record show, all three commissioners are present, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the agenda with one add-on being the nomination process for the by-state bridge authority.
When do you want to put that?
And I'll second it.
New business.
Okay, we have motion as second to approve this business agenda with one add-on. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We do not have any commissioner meeting minutes for today, so that moves us right along to citizen comment. Citizen comment is three minutes. You're allowed to speak on anything related to county business or things going on in the county. Please, at the start of your statement, please give your name and general location for the record. We will start in the room as always, and I'm not seeing a hand, so we will go online. If you're online and you have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. I have the list up for who's there. Only today. Should go through and count how many I know of actually work here. Thirteen is my guess, but I know for sure.
Work here?
Yeah, work for the county. All right, I see a hand up from Sherri. Name and location, go ahead. We can't hear you, Sherri. Still can't hear you, Sherri. May not have your mic on for your Zoom. Yep, we don't hear you. Everything looks good on our end. I would suggest possibly, if you can even hear me, trying to log off and log back in again and see if that works, and we'll give you another try. Or call it. So with that, we will reset the clock and go to anybody else online. Have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today. 0088, go ahead.
Yeah, Del, I'm Eldred Goldendale. I was just wondering, with the ordinance and regulations, there's not been a proposal, and I just wonder, why do we keep kicking the can down the road? Do you really have any intention of putting any ordinances or regulations in front of the moratorium? Or is it just, you know, are we just playing a game, or are we getting, are we going to get serious about it? That's my comment.
I guess I'm gonna, go ahead, and I don't understand your question. I mean, I'm assuming you're talking the moratorium with solar. It's before the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission will make recommendations to us for ordinances. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, yes, and you know, you guys are the governing authority over this county, and you always act like you never have any idea what's going on. You don't know anything about taxes. You don't know anything about this. But I mean, you're the ones that should be in contact with the Planning Commission on updating and telling them that we need to get this done, because, I mean, it was stated months ago by prosecuting attorney that you guys needed to do something like this, and it just keeps, you just keep fooling with it. You're not, nobody's doing anything. You're just sitting around, you know, giving us lip service without any action.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comment. I am sure you'll get a response. Anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners? I see none. If you have citizen comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. I still see none. So with that, I will take the opportunity to respond to Mr. Eldred. The, to change our zoning, we go through the Planning Commission is the one that hears issues on our zoning, and they make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. We don't work hand-in-hand with the Planning Commission, or even attend the Planning Commission hearings, or talk to them about the issue, because we're going to be hearing the case in a public hearing, in a quasi-judicial nature. So we are obeying state law, sir. What you're recommending us do would be to violate state law. And that's the answer to that question. I have 4901, go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Sherri. I don't know what is wrong with my computer. I don't know if you could hear me.
We can hear you now.
Okay, so I would also like to talk about the situation tonight with FSEC and the State Agency, and how our county is being non-reactive to this State Agency, who says they have the authority, which we have not found any authority. I continue to question their territorial jurisdiction. I was hoping that at least one of our commissioners would jump on board with this. You failed to retain legal advice for this solar invasion around Goldendale. You act like it's nothing, really. This will change Goldendale, future, forever. This will change our county, and I don't know why it's acting like it's just a non-issue. And, you know, why, when our county can get higher attorneys for everything, Track D, fight the citizens against the under canvas, whatever else, you know, the landfill, all these things you hire outside counsel for, you're refusing to stand up as the body of our three leaders, the three leaders of our county, to say, "We need legal advice here." We, because of our PA not helping for whatever agenda he's got going on, that should not excuse you three commissioners taking action and saying, "Okay, we're going to get legal advice here." And so tonight, without due process, with a whole bunch of shenanigans that went on, we don't even know what the first meeting was with FSEC. Apparently, one of the commissioners got them to split the meeting without the public understanding what was going on. So now the public, we were shown a public hearing notice that said it had a CIPA threshold decision attached to it. So we all came prepared with our comments on how this is not consistent with our land zoning of extensive ag. It's not consistent, and now that got somehow split off, and now we have this other hearing going on. So we have a whole bunch of chaos going on here. You all, you all tell us, you don't know what's going on, and this is absolutely despicable. How is our county not working with the State Agency that is going to come in and say, "We need to turn ag land that surrounds the seat of our county into an industrial zone, into an industrial solar zone?" This has gotten out of control. Action needs to happen immediately, and I'm really disappointed. And I was hoping you three could have got it together and made a plan how we were going to move forward with our own county zoning. Again, FSEC should not have territorial jurisdiction. Stand up for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Just making notes. Lot to unwrap on that one. Anybody else in the room? Okay, go ahead. We have in the room. Oh, thank you.
Kathy Moco, Goldendale. Thought I would bring everybody's attention that this is National Police Week in the United States, and it was started in 1962 by President Kennedy, and it is for everyone to appreciate their police and law enforcement officials and everything they do for us. And I think we're especially fortunate in our county, that we have all the good people that take care of us and make it safe here, because every time you turn around, something awful, somebody shooting somebody somewhere else, and it's terrible. So, anyway, I feel perfectly safe going anywhere in this county, which is thanks to our police and you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more thing. This is a separate issue, idea. We have a essay contest that was put out to all the public schools, private schools, and homeschool on America the Beautiful. The state, our county Republican Party did, you know, put the thing out. It has cash prizes. It's grades 12. One section is grade 10 through 12, one is 7 through 9, and one's 4 through 6. So I'm in charge of grading them all, which is rather entertaining. Anyway, these young people have done a really good job of, we have artistic, written essays artistic, which are pictures, mostly from the younger ones, and then a couple poems, which, we've got some very talented young people in the county. We had 16 submissions. It's pretty good. And then they're going to be presented, the winners, at the Lincoln's Day Dinner on January, June 3rd in Benning. Anyway.
Still got to register for that.
One young man's favorite thing about America the Beautiful was McDonald's. I thought that was pretty cute.
Oh, so you got my letter.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, we will go back online. Anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today?
Yes, I'd like to comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Gabrielle Gilbert, Fruit Valley. So I want to discuss childcare. I want to encourage the county to actually step into that arena and address it. You have your own workers and a number of children that require childcare. I just got three text messages in the last hour, and I am moving for after-school pickup with three separate families. And we need to be serious about the economics of our communities and the mental health of our families and the social fabric that we create, and you have to look at childcare as an economic driver and one that is infrastructure, and how is a county going to work out how they're going to participate in getting affordable, accessible, and available childcare in this region? Because we are a desert, and we are a desert in the gorge, and I, I don't feel that ignoring it is acceptable or pretending that it's not in your wheelhouse, or the idea that your ideology, on your political ideology front, takes you from becoming leaders and addressing this very real issue that exists and that it is solely economic. And when you address it and look at it as solely economics on what you build in a community and how you entice people to stay in this community, to come into this community, to remain in this community, and to give the financial and the social strength of families, because you have available childcare. And it's something that needs to be looked at and really sitting down with elected officials on state and federal level that you have access to, and start coming up with a plan on how you address our childcare desert in this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? I see Lisa Evans unmuted. Do you have something for us?
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Lisa Evans. I live in White Salmon. I just wanted to ask about the Blake decision, and if, you know, if you guys can give us a little bit of an update. Are you, are you working with the sheriff? You know, we have a great opportunity to set the tone in our county for how we want to handle people in possession of hard drugs. And, you know, because the legislature's going back in a special session. Representative Mossbrucker has done a fantastic job so far in trying to make our county safer and, and our whole state safer, but if they don't come out of this special session, then everything comes back to the counties. So I was just curious if, you know, if you guys have been in discussions about what it's going to look like for our county going forward if the legislature doesn't come through with a, with a new bill on, on drugs and how we're going to classify them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I do have answers for that one, so hang in there. We'll go back online. Anybody else have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners? Del, you already commented, sir.
I didn't use my three minutes.
Sir, it's one time per person. It's up to you to use your three minutes or not.
Anyway.
Can you mute that, please? Thank you. One time per person. You can use all your time or none of your time, but one time per person, and that's a rule we hold for everybody to keep it fair and even for everybody. Anybody else in the room or online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Anybody in the room or online have citizen comment?
I just have a quick question.
Can you mute that, please? Again, sir, we only offer one time per person. I'm not changing the rules for one person, because then, to be fair to everybody, I'd have to change the rules for everybody.
But if you do have a quick question, you are welcome to email or call after the meeting.
Yep.
Either or, all of us.
I actually think more conversations could be pertinent to get correct information out there. We'll go one more time. In the room or online, with anybody new that hasn't provided citizen comment, to provide citizen comment. Otherwise, maybe we start to answer these a little bit early and then take new citizen comment in between them, because we always get people to speak at the last moment, and then we run long. So does anybody want to respond early, or I can, or?
I'll start.
Okay.
Mr. Eldred, we have been working on development of those ordinances, and we passed that job to the Planning Director and the Planning Commission. And I did hear that they did meet last night and started that process, so things are moving. Unfortunately, things don't happen overnight. It's government, and so we have processes, which is very frustrating sometimes. And Kathy, thank you for doing the, the... Yes, I was looking for the word, for the essays with the kids. That's quite the job that you get to read them and sort through. It'll be interesting to see the differences in them. I think that's funny, and the artwork. It's, it's fun to look at what the kids come up with. And in regards to National Police Week, I did send out an email, but I'd like to just say publicly that I'm so thankful for all of our officers and all of our volunteers and all of the responders. And we did have an event last week in White Salmon, and we couldn't be more lucky for the county that we live in. The parents were assured, and things went very smoothly, and it's all due to the people who care. So that was good. And Gabby, we will get together. I have been working on something personal that I have a lot of hope in, and I think it's going to be a real positive movement. It'll connect very well with the state effort to childcare, and you and I will get together next week. I will leave my office today and set up a meeting time with you, and I'll talk to you personally about what I've been working. But thank you.
Do you have anything you want to do? Anybody else online have citizen comment before we continue with responses? Seeing none, so I'll do mine, and then we'll check back online. To go back to Del, there's, there's laws and rules and RCWs that have to be followed. I know you were here last night, at least before the Planning Commission meeting, because I saw you downstairs for the law enforcement memorial that happened downstairs. So again, we are doing things. Sherri, I understand you question FSEC's legal authority, and, you know, you can choose to hire an attorney and sue FSEC on the grounds that they don't have any legal authority. I would recommend seeking advice of counsel before you spend your money on such a thing. The, the county does have counsel, and the county will not, at this time, be questioning FSEC's legal authority under state law, because as Commissioner Anderson said last week, they have that right under law until challenged and victorious. So the fact that they do or don't have territorial jurisdiction, that's your interpretation. That's not necessarily mine. You mentioned that we hired outside counsel for under canvas. I believe that is incorrect. We have never hired outside candle, can, or counsel for under canvas. We hired a hearings examiner to do the hearing. That is not counsel, that is a judge, essentially. And I don't know where you say, we all tell you that we don't know what's going on. We're well aware of what's going on. We follow the FSEC process as they deem it to us, and we go through their process, which is why we try to tell the citizens that you don't want to go through the FSEC process, and now we're here. Kathy, yes, Fallen Officers Week and National Police Week. They had a Fallen Officers Memorial come in on May 7th. I was lucky enough to be able to attend that in the Courthouse lawn. That was very emotional and powerful with the pictures of all the slain officers on the trailer. And then again, Sheriff Songer had a get-together downstairs for Memorial last, or last night, and that was also well-attended, and brought tears to a few eyes, including my own. Gabby and childcare, I think that's been addressed. Lisa and Blake decision. Yes, we are well aware of the legislature's failure to act on the Blake decision. In working with Washington State Association of Counties on the Legislative Steering Committee, we are actively hoping that the legislature in this special session will address this issue, because obviously the governor called them back because he finds it's important, because if they don't do something, all the counties will, and all those counties are going to do something differently. So that becomes the problem with litigation to each one of those counties. So hopefully, the legislature does it. If the legislature doesn't do it through Washington State Association of Counties, the counties will probably get together and propose a common fix that can be backed up by other counties and withstand legal scrutiny in the courts. So we did have Sheriff Bob a couple weeks ago in here, and I talked to him about the Blake decision and told him to be ready, because if, if the legislature doesn't act, and the counties will have to, we're going to need to get him and the judges and the prosecutor and us and everybody in the same room so that we can put something in place and not just let bad guys walk the streets with pockets full of cocaine. So it is being addressed, but right now it's in the watch and wait and see. That's all I have. So in five minutes, we'll go back in the room or online for citizen comment. Anybody online has citizen comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. I see none. Do you want to go, sir?
Sure, since it's closed now. Mr. Eldred, you're well aware that we are working on this problem, and we are working down this path. You attended the Planning Commission meeting last night, and you listened in to it. You are well aware that the Planning Commission set direction for our staff to work on the ordinance, to come up with draft, to look at other counties around the state, and I, from what I have heard, that our Planning Commission is doing their homework. They're doing their own research, and I am glad to see that they're doing that, and I thank them for all their time. They are meeting almost bi-weekly right now this year, and we are asking a lot from our planning commissioners. So saying that we have no idea what's going on, I'm sorry, sir, but it's obvious that our, our Planning Commission is working very hard on a multiple set of fronts. Sherri, Commissioner Christopher was correct. We did not hire outside legal counsel with under canvas. We were required to hire outside legal counsel with Track D, because you have to be authorized in order to go in front of the Supreme Court of the United States. Our prosecuting attorney cannot just show up and give testimony. And in terms, with regards to your question about splitting the meeting up, absolutely. That was this board's request of FSEC, because we got notice that there was going to be a public hearing, and it was going to include both the public meeting that we all attended a couple of weeks ago, as well as the meeting tonight, which is the actual land use consistency hearing. We asked for that to be split up so that staff, as well as us, would have, as well as the community, would have all the time necessary in order to formulate their thoughts and statements with regards to both the consistency hearing as well as the ask. It was pretty evident that we were all asking at the meeting to move forward with a full EIS rather than just pushing it off, and at this meeting, the board and what has already been written has been submitted to FSEC. I wait to hear if my seatmates will be able to attend that meeting. I have another meeting I have to be at for the Hood River Bridge, so I will not be able to attend this evening. Kathy, thank you so much, as always, for your positive thoughts. National Police Week, I was unable to attend last night, but as I heard, it was well-attended, and we have an amazing group of professionals in this county that are keeping us safe day in and day out. And with regards to childcare, I look forward to what Commissioners Ola brings forward in the near future. And Lisa, with regards to the Blake decision, we are completely fortunate in this county to have Representative Mossbrucker be on that negotiation, negotiating committee, and I have full faith and credit that if there's someone who can get the agreements done at the state level, it is Gina, and so I hope that we don't have to deal with it. If we do have to deal with it, we will take action on that as quickly and appropriately as possible. With that, sir, I do believe we're out of time.
Pretty close. One minute. I will say that I do, I did sign up for testimony with FSEC, so.
And so did I.
Okay, so two of us did.
And I'll be tuning into the Oregon State Legislature's... And I'll be tuning into the Oregon State Legislature's testimony on the House bill for...
The bridge funding?
The bridge funding. So I have full faith and credit in you guys.
Okay, I do have...
Your testimony?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
You don't have to approve it, you just thought I'd give it to you to read if you weren't going to be there. With that, it is still 1:29. We'll go one last call for citizen comment. Anybody out there have a citizen comment that hasn't commented already today? If any of you commented and you didn't get the answer, or we missed one of your questions, as Commissioner Anderson said earlier, we are always open to phone calls and emails, questions, comments, clarification. I am always happy to provide information, because I think that makes it a little bit better that there might actually be correct information floating around in the county. With that, it is 1:30, so we will close citizen comment for the day. We will move on to public hearings, public meetings, and bid openings. Today, we have a bid opening for the Clickatuck County Jail re-roofing project. We'll start with a staff update, I guess. Are we going to get a staff update, or do I need to read more? I'll read more.
You'll read more, no.
Okay. Okay, they'll hand out things. So jail roof project, the work is to be performed under these specifications, consistent with furnishing all labor tools, material, and equipment necessary for construction of the Clickatuck County re-roofing project. Specific work includes, but is not limited to, the removal and replacement of the SBS module buildup roofing, including flashing and the removal and reinstallation of the HVAC equipment and ducting, all in accordance with the contract plans, contract provisions, and standard specifications.
Mr. Chairman, we have an engineer's estimate of $447,201.08 for the Clickatuck County Jail re-roofing project. We have one bidder.
Oh, three walkthroughs and one bidder, huh? That scares me.
The bid bond is present. Oh, sorry, the bid is from Olympic Roofing.
I just noticed the header on that page, so I figured you'd be able to grab it for me.
Okay. Doesn't say which sheets, but the addendums, one and two, where is that?
Page six.
I'll count them out.
It's the signature page.
Bid proposal, they have to number their pages.
Oh, yeah?
Well, okay, we missed that.
It's on the signature page.
Okay. Certification of compliance with wage payment statutes. Experience and references. Signature page. Okay, receipt is hereby acknowledged of addendums number one and two. Okay. The total bid cost is $435,375. Again, that is $435,375. I would make a motion, Chair, to remand this bid back to the Public Works Department for review and recommendation.
And I'll second.
We have a motion as second to return the bid back to Public Works for review and I will point out that the estimate was 447,201, and the bid was 435,375. With that, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen.
Give you a map of the Oregon Trail.
I saw that. I appreciate it, sir.
You're the guy.
All right, well, thank you.
This is Rick Miller in by the way.
Oh, okay.
Guys have heard me talk about. That's him in the real flesh.
In the real flesh. So we'll be seeing more of him, is what you're saying?
Yes.
We are well early. Our next one is at 1:45 with Department of Fish and Wildlife. I don't know if you're ready to go yet, or if we should just wait and hang out for 10 minutes if you have people...
We might have people sign in for this one.
So we might want to just hang out and discuss other business for 10 minutes and...
Mr. Chairman, do we have payment approvals?
Yeah.
I don't think we've done those.
I'll get that one. Yeah, I can have it. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to pay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of $315,746.23, and payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $785,020.49 for the date ending May 15, 2023. My motion is to accept.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion as second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. You can read the 2:45 one if you want.
2:45?
Mm-hmm. Motion for approval of the final pay estimate?
I got that one, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the first and final pay estimate and the final acceptance for the Fairgrounds Waterline in the amount of $20,868.44. And my motion is to accept.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion as second to pay, final pay estimate for the Fairgrounds Waterline project. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We can do the consent.
Lot of money for a waterline test.
Yeah, I saw that. Anybody want to do the consent?
Yeah, I can do that if you want. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with all 12 items.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion as second to approve the consent. Any discussion on consent agenda items? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with all 12 items say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Still got eight minutes. So I will take a second to look at the Oregon Trail Rally roads that are going to be used this week. Dallas Mountain Road is a normal one. Good No Hill staging area, which is another one.
Are these gravel roads?
Yeah, they like to slip and slide around the corners and not so much the traction Other reusing with Kaiakas. Commissioner Anderson, did you get any complaints from any of these roads last year? I know we had issues with Hopter Road in the past, and that's why they moved it, but I have not got any complaints about these roads.
I've never heard of any complaints that came in to me, but they're rarely in my district, so...
Right, well, we all hear about them. Well, not always, but Hopter was an issue.
Was it last year?
Oh, yeah. Well, no, they didn't do it last year, they took it off last year, because they were going too fast and plowing through fences, and then bulls were escaping.
Oh.
It got to be...
You're not supposed to reg.
Well, it's rally racing. Occasionally a car goes through a fence.
And your bulls get out every now and then, too?
Well, mine's on a straightaway, so they shouldn't load on mine, but then again, I had somebody driving their car over the hill that went way too fast, flipped, rolled, and ended up using my bull field for a lifetime helicopter, so...
But it didn't go through your fence, though?
But it didn't go through my fence. It went through somebody else's fence.
When was that?
Last year.
And you're not on that route this year?
No. No, that was a different, a different thing. No, they didn't. If they, I'd be fine if they put the rally race in front of my house. It's just my road's too straight and just hilly, so all they get is jumps.
Oh.
And then they are having the rally thing downtown Gresham, or Gresham, downtown Golden Dale on Saturday morning. Yeah.
One of these. I thought that one there was...
No, Dallas Mountain Road, Good No Hills.
Horse Sheen Bend.
Yeah, but that starts at the very top of the hills.
Right, so yours is over here.
This is where she's been here.
Yeah.
So we got it still.
It's pretty close.
Yeah, but that's the starting location. They have to be down here to actually watch it.
Right.
And then you didn't get enough.
No.
So you can walk in a mile and a half to watch, but, and then it's all trees, so I can't even see from my house to watch it.
Here's the consent agenda, sir.
Horse Sheen Bend is this road here. It goes out this way toward town.
Okay, got it. Okay.
So this starts right at the corner of Matt Child's property.
Is this going down to the...
Yeah, this goes down, click that, right across the bridge of...
Down that ugly road.
So they don't cross the bridge, they'll continue to go, whatever this ends up being, Schilling or whatever, kind of a little on the dead end there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they go down that sketchy...
Yeah.
Yeah, you better don't want to go off the wrong way on that one.
Uh-uh.
But hey, it's probably safer for them, because they know it's one-way traffic.
Yeah.
For us, it's two-way traffic, and it's way more dangerous.
Yeah. At least when they've got it blocked, it's one-way. I worry about meeting somebody there and backing up.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, well, that's when I go, half the time if I'm going to Lyle or White Salmon, MapQuest says go that direction. And they're printing off maps from...
The tourist on that one.
Yeah, I know, you got to be pretty brave, or the road better be pretty dry, or it better be at the right time, you never have to pass anybody, especially in a truck.
I had to do that last year for the home and garden truck, because they were paving.
See, I'll drive it in the Jeep, because I don't have a problem going over the boulders and the ditch and, and whatever. Sorry for everybody online, we're killing time for four more minutes until we have our update from Fish and Wildlife, so bear with us as we make small talk and pay our bills.
They're here.
Everybody here, everybody online going to be here?
Thank you.
See, that's my biggest worry, is there's somebody online that wants to listen to this that's not here, and then they miss four minutes, and then they yell at me, because they don't know what's going on. So I would, this is a bigger one for a lot of people, so I would prefer to start this At least I think it's a big deal. Maybe the general public doesn't think it's a big deal. I don't know. I like this signing the agenda stuff, getting the agenda done early.
Mm-hmm.
Is he going to hook up a laptop, or does he want it to just, oh, I was going to say that's fine. It's either that or I can just share mine from the handout you gave and scroll when he wants to scroll. So whichever one you want to do. Yeah, good, here, perfect. It's hot. I turned the AC down a little bit, but I'm going to give it another lap.
It's stuffy. Yeah, it's humid.
Well, it's only, according to Public Works, it's only a two-degree swing.
What?
So if in the middle is 70, you can go down to 68 or 70.
He just scared her out. Have a great day, Kathy.
Yeah, we'll just slide up some more office chairs for you guys over there. Yeah, we'll just slide up some more office chairs for you guys over there.
You guys will have to share the mics.
Anything I need to do to get this...
You should be able to... You've got to call in to dial it into Zoom.
Okay, okay.
I mean, if he's plugged in, we should just be able to switch it to presenter.
Or I can share my screen. That makes it easier. Oh, you didn't get it, I shared mine. I shortcut it, yeah.
That's, that's my screen.
Okay. Well, then I will unshare mine. I was going to say, because I didn't have all the little side windows, I had it like that.
I hope that people online can see it, though.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not showing on ours.
So you've got to click through it with them?
Well, that's not me.
That's, that's going to there. Yours was on Zoom for people that are on Zoom.
Right, but it's not showing on Zoom.
It is now.
It should be showing on Zoom.
I'm not scrolling, I'm scrolling in mine. Oh, there it scroll. Okay, I guess we'll try that. I'll try to, I'll try that.
Yours is on that screen.
It's scrolling over there, but not over there. I would say unshare yours. Yeah, I would say unshare that one, and let's see if mine will...
He not went back to him.
That's just weird. I was going to say, that one's still you over there. Did you unshare? Well, yeah, but there's a little green button that should say unshare on your, on your own Zoom, on your own laptop. They're both dead now. Got it.
We're good.
Okay, that's me. So you can just tell me next page, and I'll scroll to the next page. Yep.
Push that to be, okay. So thank you, Commissioners, for inviting us to address you on this really important project, the Clickatuck Hatchery property transfer, that we've been in, in the progress of doing this for over 20 years now, working with our co-managers, Yakima Nation. Today, I'm with you, I'm Mike Livingston, Regional Director for our South Central Washington region with Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. And to my right is Trevor Hutton, who's our Fish Program Manager in the region. Then we're joined by Phil Rigdon and Bill Sharp with the Yakima Nation. We're going to walk you through a set of PowerPoint slides here, but Phil and I are just going to give you a little bit of high-level introductory, introductory comments, and then we're going to hand it over to Trevor and Bill to walk through the details of it. As I mentioned, we've been in progress of doing this for a number of years. The Yakima Nation's been operating the hatchery since 2016 under an agreement with the Department of Fish and Wildlife. We've, actually, 2006, I apologize. But we've been under a number of different leases and agreements in operating this for a number of years now, and it's been a really productive partnership. The Department of Fish and Wildlife entered into this agreement based on a discussion early on about the Yakimas wanting to invest significant amount of capital dollars in improving the facility through their arrangements with the Bonneville Power Administration. And because these fish are produced for all in the river, it only made sense for us to be able to partner with them and let them invest some of these important dollars to make the hatchery a state-of-the-art operation, and they're in the progress of doing that. So there's two, two projects going on. There's the, the capital investments in the hatchery, and then there's also this property... Uh, so there's two, two projects going on, there's the, the capital investments in the hatchery, and then there's also this property transfer. And the transfer is a, it's, it's a, it's a legal process that we're going through, um, we have to have, uh, authority and, um, approval from our Fish and Wildlife Commission. We gave them a briefing in March, and we're gonna be bringing this back to them in June with, um, input that we get from the public during A C P A comments. Trevor will touch on that process, and then, uh, the plan is currently to bring it to our commission in August for a, approval vote. And so we're, we're walking through this process, it's going to take a while, we don't frequently give away, um, uh, property, we often work on a, um, acquiring property in various places, but this is a very unique situation, I think that's in the best interest of all, and so that's our plan today. And I really appreciate the opportunity to come and address you, this is a, this is an important, um, notification to you all so that you can, um, weigh in in any way that you, you see fit. Um, but we're, uh, we're marching towards this, um, goal of August of approval from our Fish and Wildlife Commission, and with that, I'm gonna hand it over to, uh, Phil Rigdon.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Mr. Chairman Christopher, and commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to come and, and open this conversation, I think it's an important one for the tribe. I, if you understand the work that the tribe has been doing with our fisheries work, not just in, in Clickat, but throughout the whole Columbia Basin, it's, uh, this, these strategies and the work that we've done, you know, comes from the work we've done in the Akma, and when you talk about the Clickat with just one dam to get through and much of the natural habitat above, uh, you know, up within the closed area of the reservation, is an important part that we think we could have highly successful runs as well as, is maintaining the obligations that are part of this hatchery that were meant for, um, when the dams went in, into our membership. I, I, there's a unique role that we have down in the Clickat, I think, uh, both the, the state and the tribe have very important fisheries that are, are keyed into this, and our work is very much, um, respectful in that manner, that we want to maintain those things, but also enhance them, the ability for everybody to, 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 to get into the activities that we're talking about. Um, we did, um, do, uh, kind of the transfer of the management in two thousand and six, we've been managing, we've been working towards a, um, with the Bonneville Power Administration and other funding sources to, to look at how to update the hatchery into a state-of-the-art facility and to meet the obligations with Fall Chinook, Spring Chinook, and, and the Four Stocks that, that I think are, are part of our overall strategy, and that includes Steelhead and, and those, those things. And, and so I believe, you know, Trevor and Bill are gonna give a representation on, on that part. I did come to the meeting just to, to show how, I oversee all Department Natural Resources, major policy things and importance to the tribe. Um, usually the council asks me to come and, and make sure, um, and, you know, we respect the commissioners and that manner to, to come and, you know, be part of the presentation and to, to have this conversation. So, um, I appreciate it, I'm gonna pass it to Trevor and Bill, they could go through it, then I'm open for questions after too, so.
All right, thank you, um, commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to come and present, if we can go to the next slide, I'll just give a little bit of an overview of, um, some of the broader points that, that both Mike and Phil addressed, uh, you know, the, the Akma Clickat Fisheries Program was established in nineteen eighty-two. This was part of the Northwest Power and, and Conservation Council's Fish and Wildlife Program. Um, at that time, it was, it was recognized that there was a need for, um, some improvements to the, the hatchery and, but both the hatchery production and the, the wild reproduction side of things, so we have this kind of meeting of production and ecological stability. That, that prompted Yakima Nation and W D F W staff to, to kind of convene this Yakima Clickat Fisheries Program, and, and it's been something that I think is, um, beneficial and a model to, to the way that the state and tribes can work together in, in other parts. We've had a lot of success here owing, you know, in large part to work that's been spearheaded by the Akma Nation as well. And, and part of the, the reason that we're here talking about handing off the Clickat Hatchery property is, is, you know, firsthand understanding of how the Akma Nation has operated similar facilities throughout the Akma Basin. So if we can go to the next slide. Sorry, my allergies have kicked in today, so I'll make the best of that situation. So the, the facility itself was constructed using Mitchell Act funding in the, uh, you know, right around nineteen fifty, uh, it's been in continuous operation ever since then, and, um, a, as, as was already brought up, in two thousand and six, there was an effort to, to transfer that operation over to the Akma Nation. Um, I'll, I'll just note, you know, so it's, it's out there for everybody to consider is, this is a property that is within the Track D portion of the reservation. Um, I'm sure you guys are well familiar with all those issues. Um, but as far as what the facility is, is used for today, uh, we have a segregated harvest program that supports the production of four million Fall Chinook, a million Coho, six hundred thousand Spring Chinook, a, and recently, uh, that was expanded to include some, uh, you know, Orca Task Force recommendations for additional prey, uh, to the tune of a, another million Fall Chinook. And the, these production goals are, um, part of the United States V Oregon Management Agreement, this is something that, um, will remain unchanged by the, the property transfer occurring, uh, these fish are for the benefit of all, you know, lower river users and, and users in the Clickat. But yeah, just, just wanted to point out that, that the ownership doesn't control the production of the facility, that this is part of the Y K F P process, this is part of the U S V Oregon Management Agreement.
I didn't realize the production was so high.
Yeah.
It's, it's a big number.
Yeah, there's a lot of fish. Uh, so if we could go to the next slide, just want to make sure we have plenty of time for discussions, I'll get through these as quick as I can. You're all probably familiar with where the Clickat Hatchery is located, but it's, it's essentially a stone's throw from the northern border of the county, uh, right there on the bend of the Clickat. Comes down from the Glenwood Highway, down a, a steep and often perilous road to the hatchery facility itself. And the next slide is, I think, stolen from your website, there we go, um, Clickat County G I S site, it's, uh, it's a hundred and sixty knot, sixty-six point nine-nine acre parcel. And, and the entirety of that parcel is, is what's being proposed for transfer to the Akma Nation. Next slide, please. So, again, just to speak to, uh, this facility specifically, there has been a long relationship between W D F W and Yakima Nation. This, there was a memorandum of understanding related to the creation of, uh, the Yakima Clickat Fisheries Project in nineteen ninety-four. Uh, in two thousand and three was when we began this process of transitioning the facility over to the Akma Nation, um, which culminated two thousand and five and six. Since then, the Akma Nation has been operating the facility, uh, we had one staff member from the state that was, that was still a part of that operation for a time. And, you know, at, at this point now with the, the infrastructure project coming along, Yakima Nation having secured funding for a number of those things, uh, as, as Mike and Phil said, the, the time just seems like it's right to, to make this transfer and, and, um, it, it'll, it will really be, I think, a, a positive in, in all regards. Um, I'll just note that, you know, beyond the operation of the facility, this was unique in that, um, National Marine Fisheries Service transferred Mitchell Act funding over to the Akma Nation. That's not something that happens too terribly frequently. A, and again, a, as I, as I stressed earlier, um, you know, any, any concern about, you know, the long-term production at the facility is really tied to these, these larger management agreements that, um, you know, it, it's, it's not as if when we sign the deed over, Yakima Nation Fisheries is gonna go and, and do something completely different there, it, it's all part of U S V Oregon and the Y K F P. Next slide, please. I'll turn it over to Bill here.
Thanks, Trevor, um, Commissioner Christopher, uh, Commissioners. Yeah, what I'd like to point out now is some of the infrastructure we brought to the table, um, in this interim from when we started to where we are now, so, um, one of the key elements up there is that single-lane bridge we built, uh, replacing the old foot path. That bridge is constructed and actually has within it, uh, a twenty-four-inch pipe that will be used to convey water, uh, down to the hatchery as we rebuild that piece. Lower right-hand corner, you can see, uh, a repair that was needed on that aging infrastructure, so one of the key elements is securing that water to the facility. In addition, uh, through, uh, NOAA funding, some, some state funding, we've, we've done considerable things, we've, uh, brought three-phase power down to the facility, have a fish transport truck, um, the incubation chiller is, uh, in place, uh, we need to commission that, but what that all will allow us to do is mimic natural river temperatures as we, as we grow our integrated, uh, Spring Chinook. And, a, as previously mentioned, we, we added three rearing tanks to augment prey for southern resident killer whales, and then, um, we have additional, uh, manpower deferred maintenance. Next slide. Um, as folks have probably seen, our, our facility down there, uh, at Lyle Falls, our adult trap and monitoring facility, that, uh, was a B P A Fisher Accord, uh, building that allows us to capture brood stock, uh, for the Clickat Hatchery, um, right, Spring Chinook, uh, Fall Chinook. Coho primarily come in from the Lewis River as I'd egg, but it's, it's really important to have a brood collection facility down in the lower basin so you can sort of, uh, not, uh, bring in your integrated stock randomly throughout the bill-shaped curve of the run, not imposing human bias.
Now, when you're talking brood stock, are you talking wild fish collection to make your brood stock program?
So currently, we have a segregated program, which is hatchery to hatchery. With our master plan, um, uh, in the, in the Power Council process, we propose to, uh, build an integrated program using wild fish a, and similar to our Cleelam Hatchery, all the science and technology from there that we've learned over the many decades, uh, w- will be key to, uh, our integrated program. In addition, we have a, a enumeration facility up at Castile Falls at River Mile sixty-four under the Accords that looks at, um, uh, adult passage into that upper basin, which is kind of limited right now, but, but with our integrated program, that will definitely increase. Next slide. So this slide here sort of captures what i- is on the ticket for our capital project under the Fisher Accord, um, moving forward. Um, with that, we hope to have groundbreaking in early August, and, um, so at the top of the slide on the left i- is the intake where we'll, um, basically parallel the existing pipeline, a twenty-four-inch steel pipeline will come down that hill and then cut through that bridge that I, uh, described, um, and then come up into our energy dissipation room, and, and then that water is circulated through the hatchery. The box on the right is kind of where a lot of the key infrastructure w- will be built, uh, which includes eight thirty-foot circular rearing tanks where our Spring Chinook Integrated Program will be. We'll have the ability to blend that spring water with surface water, and, um, and then on that picture on the right, sort of towards the bottom, is where we'll have our, uh, brood collection, uh, excuse me, brood holding, where we will either get swim-ins or, or transfer fish from a truck into those brood collection, uh, holding tanks. And then we will crowdfish over to our new spawning building, um, raise fish up in a bit of an elevator lift and, uh, give them a quick electro-narcosis. And, um, with that, uh, small voltage, it, it sort of stuns the fish, that way we can, um, easily test whether they're ripe and ready to spawn. And if not, uh, they go back to the holding ponds. It's, uh, pretty elaborate, uh, a lot of, lot of intricacies there. Uh, one of the key element is, uh, we will upgrade the pollution abatement system for that hatchery, uh, modernize that, make sure that meets, uh, N P D S, National Pollution Elimination. Discharge, thank you, Trevor, that acronym, uh, make sure it meets all those standards, and, um, yeah, it's, it's much-needed, uh, infrastructure to breed life back into that aging facility, so. That kind of summarizes that.
Great, and if we can go to the next slide, I'll just kind of, of, you know, wrap up sort of what our process looks like. Uh, so we did brief the Fish and Wildlife Commission in March. That, all those materials are available on our website, if, if there's anything there that you'd care to see, it's, it's largely, um, similar to what we're doing here today. Right now, we're in the midst of a, a C P A process to take a look at the environmental review here, um, that hit the streets on Friday of last week, so that's, that's open. You know, looking for public comment and, um, you know, certainly, th- that's one way to comment if you have questions.
What was the designation, was it an M D N S or?
Uh, it was a D N S, yeah. So, so that's partially one of the reasons why we're here today, is just to make you folks aware that, that that C P A is out and live. You know, if, if there are questions or, or anything that would require some follow-up, we're happy to do that. Our goal is that, at the conclusion of the C P A review, we'll be taking, uh, the comments that we've received there and presenting those to the Fish and Wildlife Commission again by way of an update, uh, we'll be inviting additional public comment at that commission meeting in June, uh, with the hope that we get to a decision point in August of this year. Uh, once that's done, and, and assuming we get an affirmative from our Fish and Wildlife Commission, uh, there will be a number of steps that we have to follow as far as, you know, getting the, the proper legal paperwork taken care of by the, the governor and the attorney general, but, um, you know, kind of our, our measure of success from our perspective is getting it in front of the Fish and Wildlife Commission for approval. And so that, that's where we stand today, that's sort of the project in a nutshell. Happy we had a chance to come down and, and present, and, and we'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
I do have a couple, um, being a fish guy. Are the current hatchery fish that are produced there all fin-clipped? Or what percentage?
So, uh, the, the majority are, the Fall Chinook with the, the, about, uh, five million that we have, it's, um, it's, it's difficult to mark all of those fish, um, because of space and time and, and sort of choreographing the marking. With this facility, we will be able to fully ma- uh, mark all hatchery fish. The Fall Chinook coming back to the Clickat, however, uh, even marked and unmarked fish are both available for, uh, harvest and retention.
Right. So, um, I guess that's kind of my underlying question is, is Fish and Wildlife in some kind of an M O U with the transfer, is they gonna have some kind of M O in, uh, you in there that the Akma Nation would have to continue to mark the fish? Or could the Akma Nation choose in a year from now that they don't want to mark the fish?
That's a good question.
So, uh, under U S V Oregon, that's, that sort of determines the, the marking strategies, so, yeah. I will say, on an integrated Spring Chinook program, because those wild fish that we use for brood, um, uh, when we, when we grew, um, we have those returning adults, come back to the system, those fish are gonna get essentially a free ride to go spawn above Castile into that really high-quality habitat. So, as in, as we did in Cleelam, um, those fish retain their adipose fin but have an elastomer I tag mark, or some other diagnostic mark. So we know that this is an F-one fish, uh, you know, coming back for our integrated program, free ride to Castile. So those fish, uh, to escape fisheries are, and, and, you know, the value of the building the integrated program, those are ones that would not be clipped.
No, that makes sense, okay.
Is that a percentage of the Spring Chinook, or is that all?
It would be a percentage, so, um, right now, U S V Oregon, um, is six, six hundred thousand smolts, and these are yearling smolts. And identified within U S V Oregon Management Agreement is building that to eight hundred thousand. So, as, you know, the integrated program will be a s- slow stepping stone, so, so, yeah, we will continue to, uh, clip about six hundred thousand annually as we build the integrated program.
What, uh, um, just, you didn't mention Coho or Steelhead, do you clip, just to clarify fishing?
Sure.
Do they get clipped or?
Yeah, Coho a hundred percent clipped, um, a- again, Fall Chinook not. The, the Steelhead program is a state program where about ninety thousand, uh, smolts from the Skamania Hatchery are direct released into the Clickat, and they come as, as clipped fish.
They'll do that.
Yeah, they do.
Never understood that. Never understood that.
But just...
You're playing with genetics.
I hope we have enough time, but I can go on and on. So what's interesting on the Skamania fish, which basically when it started was a Lewis-Clickitat combination, but what we found, and those Skamania fish are doing as they should, they're spawning early, spawning lower, less success. We've just completed two studies that show there's spatial overlap with our wild fish, really minimal gene integration into the wild fish. So, you know, and that supports a lot of sport recreation, which is important, wanting to continue on.
How are you managing your extra million for the killer whales? What do you do with them? Do you release them differently? What do you do with them?
Commissioner Zoller, those are released on station at the hatchery.
Really?
Yeah. And it's, yeah, there again, we're working to mark as many of those as we can.
So it's almost like a mitigation for what's going back to the fish because they're allowing them to have more?
Prey. Yeah, yeah. So throughout Columbia and Puget Sound as well, there has been a real effort to, because these resident southern killer whales are critically endangered, was to provide more prey. And they prefer spring Chinook. False Chinook are also good. So throughout the Northwest, some hatcheries got earmarked funding to bolster that production.
Okay, thank you.
I might have missed it. When you said that you clip a percentage of them, do you have like goals of the percentage that you clip or is it based, how does that?
Commissioner Anderson, it is a goal to mark all federal fish. It is a challenge at Clickitat currently. This infrastructure, again, will really aid us in that way. And again, it's, you know, under the Mitchell Act, harvest augmentation, mitigation for dams and destruction of habitat and all the things you know, to provide that harvest is key under the NOAA-Mitchell Act.
And when you're through, I'd like to have an invite or we'd like to have an invite to view your facility. I'd love to come.
So when, likely in the fall or when we have this, we will have some event, and we will make sure that you guys are all invited to attend.
Thank you.
We will have a good celebration.
Okay.
Question for you guys. Is the Aqama Nation looking for a letter of support from the Board of Commissioners or do you feel you need one or want one?
I think we would welcome that.
I will answer that too. We welcome any support that the Commissioners can offer. We, you know, I think building that would be important for both of us. And I think we can, this would be a good stepping stone for those things.
That's exactly what I was thinking, sir.
I'd like to add, Chairman Christopher, that it'd be wonderful if maybe one went to our Fish and Wildlife Commission and maybe to Tribal Council.
I don't know about Fish and Wildlife Commission. I don't have as favorable thoughts on the Fish and Wildlife Commission as I do the Aqama Nation, so.
Well, I appreciate that. On this specific project, though, it seems like you're supportive, and so if you're going to write a letter, we ask for one. I get it. We deserve it.
Ah, sometimes.
When you had the numbers up, was that what's already been invested or what's going to be invested in the capital project?
Yeah, that pointed out what has been invested now.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about what's going to, like, the replacement of that line all through there?
Yeah.
I mean, I was like, well, that just doesn't add up. It's got to be way more.
No, no, no. The funding we have through BPA is secured through the Fisher Accord Agreement. And again, we hope to break ground in probably an 18-month construction window. We would break ground in August. Our calculations are about 60 to 80 jobs up there at the hatchery and also fabricators building equipment for the hatchery, et cetera. And I'm sort of reluctant to disclose the amount of money as we're going to be putting this out to bid shortly, which is always, you know, kind of tricky, so if you understand.
Very much so.
We have engineers' estimates, too.
Yeah, yeah. We've got Schnabel Engineering out of Boise is with BPA, and so...
So will you continue to run the old line or are you going to switch everything over to the new Steel?
Yeah, yeah, we would switch everything over to the old line, leave the existing line in place so that it's not to, yeah, yeah.
Is it going to be a backup then?
No, it would not be. It's just, it's pretty much done, and it's outlived its life. We will leave it in place just so that we don't damage the environment coming down that hill. And the other one will parallel right alongside.
How many full-time employees are currently at the hatchery?
So we have five, which is understaffed with the volume of fish we do. And as part of this agreement, when we build our integrated program, we will get a bit of an infusion from Mitchell Act for additional operation and maintenance support.
And when you're clipping fish and in the, how, seasonally, how many do you have?
You know, Joe Zent, my ME biologist, manages that. So the marking of fish, ad-clip, et cetera, coat-a-wire tag, that's a cost borne by WDFW, generally under their Pacific Post-Salmon Recovery Funding. And we've used Kelly Services in the past out of Glenwood for staff to come down. And, you know, the tagging trailers are generally six to eight people down there.
Is it all just manual, no electronic clipping?
They do have a mass marking trailer for the coat-a-wire tagging and clipping. Those are in high demand and are, you know, shipped around the state, so we do get those sometimes.
Okay, yeah. And so moving forward, there'll still be an MOA or MMU for the clipping of the fish through WDFW?
I would add, the MOU that we have with WDFW continues, even, you know, we have the lease that we currently, but the Aqama Clickitat Fisheries Project is an ongoing MOU that we will continue as co-managers to manage the fisheries in a manner that fits to achieve the goals that we have. And I say it's one of the, you know, and the Aqama's been very successful with our cooperation on doing things, and I think in the Clickitat, it will have the same, well, it already does that. We work extensively with them, but that agreement is foundational to the work we do and working with WDFW.
With the, if I may, Commissioner? With the capital improvements, are you building it so that you can do the 4 million, or 4 million fall Chinook, 1 million Coho, 600 springers, and, well, 5 million fall? Is that what you're designing it for or are you designing it bigger so if there's ever more of a push in the future, is there going to be extra capacity?
Commissioner Anderson, so what we've designed is for current USV Oregon plus the million for the false Chinook. We do, for our adult holding chambers, we have designed that such that those are expandable because around the mid-Columbia here and gorge area, the hatcheries, for example, we get some of our brood stock from little white salmon on our false Chinook. Sometimes things are tight there or we go to Priest Rapids. So the understanding of having space and, you know, we'll pursue additional funding in the future to add adult holding capacity. That way, the hatchery is sort of in control of its own destiny as it comes to brood stock.
And I also want to add, there's the get the juvenile fish out or the baby fish out. But our goal in this implementation is also, and what we use in the Aqama is trying to make sure that we have a better value for the fish coming back and surviving and being able to do that. So that's a big part of that balance. And so this is aimed at making sure we have fish coming back.
Do most of the wild stock smolts live above the hatchery? Or do you have, see much competition for food as a smolt level living in the river below the hatchery with wild versus the hatcheries that you release? Granted, the hatcheries all in the river for a week or so, or they flush out.
Correct. Yeah, so, you know, geomorphologically and geographically, the Clickitat is really unique. It sort of self-segregates, you know? You have the Big Muddy influence coming in about eight miles of that before you hit the Clickitat. The spring Chinook natural production as it currently exists is basically above the Big Muddy to the, kind of the base of Castile Falls in that tight basalt gorge, which is not ideal for our spring Chinook because of high flows and scouring. So that's why it's important to seed the habitat above Castile where it's broader floodplain and really excellent conditions, lots of wood, lots of holding, and juvenile rearing. So, but as those fish do outmigrate, the wild fish or wild springers are generally a bit earlier than our spring Chinook releases will be, but generally in that mid-April timeframe is when it's everybody's time to leave the Clickitat. The false Chinook are later, like in early June, they'll start coming out as well. The Coho about early May, similar timelines to when DFW direct plants this Skamania Steelhead.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is getting a little off-topic, but it's still, what percentage of your fish do you feel are getting predated down there at the mouth? You have good numbers on that?
So...
99% of them?
So, yeah, Commissioner Anderson, we've did a, two years' worth of a survival study using acoustic tags. We partnered with USGS. And what we found was high percentage of loss from the, on our wild Steelhead, from, essentially from our screw trap in the lower basin down to Mantle loose, we're losing about 20%. And we've done that similarly with some hatchery Coho, which have some challenging rearing conditions up at the hatchery with that one ring, but we're losing a lot of those fish in river as well. I will say on a side note that the Aqama Nation has partnered with the Corps of Engineers, and we're currently several months into a delta study where we're taking a hard look at the Clickitat Wind and White Salmon. And particularly for that reason, we know that these shallow, broad deltas create ideal fish predator habitat, walleye, pike minnow from the bottom, gulls from on top, warm, shallow habitats. And so, you know, kind of thinking, using the White Salmon as a case study where we excavated out that boat basin and built that island riparian habitat of about five acres, essentially looking at that strategy to take out of play that impaired habitat which ramps up and down during power and you can strand fit, you desiccate all the lamprey that are there. So if there's any juvenile lamprey, which spend about eight years in those sediments, anything below low pool, Bonneville, those are all toast. So you're losing a lot of production there. And the Corps of Engineers gets it. We're making great strides with them and Critfix. I've presented some, you know, some of our early findings and sort of trajectory on this study to Lyle Community Council and, you know, want to keep the community up to date as we investigate this further. But we've probably got another, I would say by next summer, we'll have some results from that study that say, you know, here's some strategies and, you know, let's, the Corps would then start their NEPA process or whatever it would take to take a look at it. One final point on that is the importance of that cold-water refugia for returning adults. If you've got this broad, shallow fan, it doesn't, it's all that cold-water benefit. And the Clickitat is a really strong cold-water refugia. You're losing it all. And so having a deeper area to hold it, kind of like Drano, you know? Drano is the second-best cold-water refugia from the Columbia to the Deschutes. Clickitat's number four, White Salmon is number six, Wind River, I think, is eight. So anyway, we're really plugged into EPA on their cold-water analysis.
What's number one?
The cowlets.
Oh.
And number three is the Deschutes. It provides a lot of cold-water benefit, and as, you know, that's the last best one on that long, warm gauntlet up above McNairy.
Is that, has that been pushed back? Because I know we were talking about that years ago, that study, did it get pushed back due to COVID?
It got pushed back, is there anybody from the Corps? It got pushed back.
There is online.
There is.
Well, I don't know. It's reported.
Yeah, no, that's wonderful. And they would agree that there were some challenges as we, you know, initially, we wanted this to be a Critfix-sponsored effort because, you know, the hood, the shoots with our Warm Springs partners, they have similar challenges. We wanted it to come through Critfix, that they had challenges with this funding source, and it had to come to one tribe. And as such, we then stood up and took it based on our work at the White Salmon, what we think might be a strategy.
I'll also say, the tribe, our leadership is taking a very aggressive stance there. We need to address these deltas, and they're changing the way the river flows, which is causing impacts to our fishermen on the Columbia and the Mantle Dam. And so we feel it's important to, not just for, you know, what Bill's talking about, but for the health of our, and safety of our community.
Indeed. And wherever, you know, wherever we can find survival benefits, look hard at them, see if it's a cost-effective approach, and I'm convinced that these locations are.
So were you still thinking like maybe purchase of a dredge is going to be the best option for Critfix or some, one of the partners?
Yeah, we, on the White Salmon, our effort there, we partnered with Tapany Construction on a battleground. They were the bidders that won the bid, and that was shoreline mechanical excavation about 14,000 cubic yard. So, yeah, generally sort of have the contractor figure it out. Suction dredges are challenging to bring above Bonneville.
So, yes, we want.
Sorry, yeah, I hope, I got tons of...
Bill will go down. Okay, any more questions for these fine gentlemen?
Thank you.
I got all mine answered.
I got all mine, too. Thank you, gentlemen. We will have discussions and see if we can come up with a letter if we're all in agreement.
Two letters.
Two letters, one and a half. Thank you, guys.
Can I have two minutes?
Sure.
I gotta go tell Bill goodbye. See ya. Yeah, so good to see you again, Bill, always. Yeah, you too.
You too, sir.
See you again.
I was hoping to give enough for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. See you soon.
Gentlemen. As you can tell, two of us are very fishy. I used to be a guide and her husband is a guide, so we're very fishy. All right, that was very, a draft template-y something, yeah. I like the idea of making them submit the letter that we can just look. Well, and it should save you guys time from having to think of something. Right? So, yeah.
Do we want to push off our continued and let Sharon do her thing since we kind of blew through that?
We did blow. Sharon, how long do you figure you're going to need? We never have questions. All right, come on forward. We think you'll probably be shorter than the other one, so, sorry.
So I just want to say I've had a tremendous amount of help from Jeff King in emergency management, first two. He's provided us with some handheld two ways to use in the interim for our communication system on our transportation service that are working well. And then also helped in reviewing the quote for the switch over to the very high-frequency system because he's got familiarity with, very much with the emergency management system and the radios, and actually saw one of the quotes that clearly had some things that were... and the radios and actually saw one of the quotes that clearly had some things that were not correct. And so that was sent back. They provided an updated quote that he has reviewed as well. And and so our quote, do our switchovers and also have them add language in there that it's not to exceed the quote. So it could actually come out a little bit less because some of the antenna or connecting cable equipment may still work with the conversion, but may or may not work. So they're going, the the total bid is, quote, is $18,844.08. But I had also asked them for, we have about 12 of our 19 current radios were the newer kind of UHF ones that we'd purchased over the years. And if they would give us a credit off, because they do have the ability to still use them in their Metro West in a UHF system. And so they had indicated they would do like a $200 credit per radio. So that would be another $2,400 off that. So I'm looking at about, you know, just under $16.5 to do that conversion over for all our vehicles, our main stations in our dispatch centers. And then the benefit will be, we won't have, you know, we'll be on that very high frequency system, which we already see even with the handhelds, which are pretty old and that that we're getting really good service. We can talk from White Salmon to Glenwood with the drivers. And so we're going to have a lot better coverage area. And then we also won't have a monthly expense, which was going to be to go to the day wireless Metro West system was going to be, you know, $6,000 a year. So we will, we previously were paying about 600 a year. And so we won't have any annual or monthly radio maintenance expense. There'll just be costs for replacements and, you know, new equipment if there's any damage. And then typically, we've also, we've always transferred over when we surplus a vehicle, we take out any working equipment and put it into the new vehicle. And so any of the radios that we have installed in this, we'll be able to, when we have replacement vehicles, pull those out and put into the new vehicles as well. And so in terms of budget wise, I have sufficient cash available in my Fund 104. I also have the way the radio costs and that and those expenses in terms of split between our grants. So our Washington State Department of Transportation grants for our fixed route and our dialeride service, we allocate those expensive based on the programs and like what vehicles are used in that. So there is sufficient funding in our fixed route service to definitely cover that their portion. We can, we'll be able to build that as an expense in that grant. Our dialeride one is a little less sure if we'll have sufficient because we've had, we did not have any suspended service like we did on the fixed route with our dialeride. And we're actually, the Washington State Department of Transportation is providing, they're going to be actually sending that amendment to soon to add some funds into our dialeride grant because of fuel costs and things that were over than what was originally anticipated because we did not have any suspension of service in that too. So.
But either way, it sounds like it's cheaper than $6,000 a year for the next.
Yeah. Yeah, overall, and it's it's going to be a better system to be on. And then it makes sense, as Jeff has said too, for us in terms of a kind of emergency management disaster response, to be able to be on a county frequency that we can dial in on. And so it seems to be working okay with being on that, the road department frequency, which is the line that we're on. So I wanted to just find out if you had any questions and if this looked okay to go ahead and proceed. And like I said, Jeff has been extremely helpful because, you know, knowing, because one of the ways too, in terms of savings, was to determine that we didn't need like the Motorola radios, the ICOM radios, which are a more affordable radio, but still hold up really well. Having that knowledge to be able to to help and look at that bit and that because.
Yeah, I'm thankful that Jeff was able to help you with this and reduce the costs. I have no issues with this and I would, I would, my opinion would be to move ahead.
Mine too.
Okay. Of course. Good job, great job saving $6,000.
Well, again, and Jeff was, has been extremely helpful to step in and then come and get, bring, we've got the mobile radios and all that, so we didn't have to have another emergency backup system in place, and it's working really well. So it's not quite as much of a urgent rush to make things, you know, happen overnight. And so I greatly appreciate his expertise and assistance.
I like the fact they give us $200 credit back and we're only paying $365 for the new one, so.
Yeah, I mean, those, yeah, and I, in terms of surplusing them, we're not going to get that. And so I think being able to have those as a credit will be and cut off.
Good sized credit. I was expecting much less, and that's why I was thinking he might be a listener. But it's way more new than ever good for surplus, so good job.
Okay, and that's all I had on that. And the only other thing would be is if on on consent agenda, if you had any questions on the Owl purchases that for the grant.
We already paid it.
Oh, I missed consent then. Okay.
We took that out for further consideration later.
They're giving the money for it. I'm not paying for it.
Thank you, Sharon.
No, thank you very much. All righty. Next up, we're running a little slate on this one. It's a public hearing, the hearing that's continued and closed to further public comment to reconsider the approval of shoreline substantial development permit and shoreline conditional use permit, number SH2022-03 for the Pit Site Trailhead Project. So currently, there's been two votes unless one of us wants to change a vote, then there needs to be a third.
And because we had another week in going through things and confirmation on some information that I have under the doctrine of fairness act, I will not step down from that recusal that I made. That was my proper legal disclosure, what I needed to do that was proper for the situation, and I have to stand by that.
Wasn't expecting that, so you have to bear with me, I think. I can't get there. I I just can't get past going your way because I think the public's interest absolutely suffers substantial detrimental effect. I should be speaking into my mic. I can hear me breathing, I got a little too close, I guess.
What that was.
My heart rate going or something. That's weird.
You got a pacemaker in there?
I don't know, they might have added one in with one of them stents moving weird.
So I guess, you know, we have a recommendation from the Planning Commission for acceptance. And there is a list of mitigations that have already been in place. The question would be is, do you feel that there's further mitigations or changes that would alleviate your concerns or minimize your concerns that would allow the project to move forward? That State Parks has already invested a significant amount of time, effort and money that will, in the end, keep people further away from the river than they currently are.
I'm looking at them one by one. I mean, I guess I'd say like the one where there's no water available for horses on the trailhead. Technically, if you wanted to make them put in water for horses on the trailhead, that would be a mitigation. But I don't know how you get past some of my other issues. You know, with trespassing, sure, we can put a, you know, a mitigation that they have to put better, larger siding, saying leaving the trailhead ballast is trespassing. We can probably agree to that. I don't know how we get past bike riding, dog walking and equestrian on the same trail because they're not going to want to change that. We can put a mitigation in there that they have to pick up animal waste, but I don't know that they'd ever do it. They're the only ones that would police it, so I think it's just a waste of breath. And then you have the traffic concerns that I have of people pulling into and out of that parking lot. And so some of those things just just can't be mitigated.
Well, I would say what we usually do with regards to the traffic is, one of the mitigating features is require a traffic study and make sure that that traffic study meets county site distances for legal ingress and egress like we do on all other projects. And as long as it meets the legal site distances that we have with everything else, how could you not agree with that?
If people are parking in that lot and then using that lot to run across the street with no crosswalk, no stoplight, no nothing. Because I absolutely think people and river users are going to use that parking lot, not just trail users. River users are going to use that parking lot and run across the street. Or river users are going to park on the riverside and then they're going to run across the street to use the bathroom. So without mitigating a crosswalk there, I don't know how we get past that.
Can you add a crosswalk as a mitigation requirement?
You asking me that? I do know that it was routed to Wash Dot, and I don't believe they had a comment, that corner is posted 20 miles an hour.
Yeah, well, Wash Dot doesn't want to put in a crosswalk because then they're liable. So that's the same thing with Lisle, so.
Concerns.
Yeah, that would make them liable if something happened. So of course they don't want to. If, let's see. If we did a traffic study, that would fix that one. Crosswalk would fix that one. If we mandated that they pick up animal waste would fix that one. Nothing's going to fix dog walking, equestrian and bike riding, but I can give up a little. Better, larger signing would fix that one. And if they provided water, it would fix that one. So if you could do those, I would.
So would you like to direct staff to include those mitigations? Or would you like to send it back to the Planning Department with your issues and have them review it and make recommendations for the board?
Or do you just want to make notes of what I'm just going to say? How about that? And that way I don't have to give you my piece of paper.
Pardon me?
Can you just take notes of the mitigations that I'm, you have a place to take notes?
Yes, and I'll also listen to the recording to make sure I don't miss anything.
So to fix my concerns, traffic study to make sure that drivers going in and out of that parking lot isn't going to be an issue. Crosswalk for people to get across the road requires State Parks to pick up animal waste. Better signing that says leaving the trail ballast is trespassing. And having water available in the parking lot for horses and dogs or whatever wants a drink might keep horses off the riverbank. Did they say for sure in their, when they came back to us that they were definitely going to put in that fence that they said was a maybe? I don't remember if they came back and, because we questioned on, they said maybe we're going to do a fence here as part of their thing. And I think they came back and said that they were going to do a fence there.
And it is a mitigation feature.
But I would add it to make sure they have a fence there to separate the parking lot from the river. I think they already did that one, but I would double check that one. That was a verbal, that was verbal, but it's not as one of our.
Have it been written?
Yeah, if those were there, I could, I mean, that alleviates my issues. So I would have, other than the general public is not, not one of them have said they wanted it, but that would alleviate my issues, so I would have no further issues, I guess.
So would the board like to make a motion?
We could make a motion with those conditions.
Shouldn't we see it in writing first?
Technically.
Perhaps the board can make a motion to approve and direct staff to work on the findings and present it to you next week for your final approval.
Yeah, we can do that.
Mr. Chairman, based on this conversation, I would move that we accept the substantial development permit and shoreline conditional use permit, SH2022-3, and direct staff to come up with findings and conclusions and include the mitigation that's been discussed between the sitting board members.
I have to second it, have discussion. I'll second it for a second discussion. I I don't know that I want to pass it without seeing the wordage.
Well, you you have to sign it. I mean, so they're going to bring it back, and if you don't like it, then we send it back.
Right, but I would make a motion to pass. Do we need to make the motion to pass it now or just the motion to direct you to go back?
You will make a motion to approve those permits and direct staff to prepare findings. Yes.
All right, motion second, discussion. All right, any other? Oh, all right, all those in favor of approval of the motion? Aye, aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yep.
Thank you. Why, I mean, usually when you go out into the woods, like horse camping, they don't have water, you bring your own. I mean, that's a normal thing. So why, why would you want to require that they have water available if that's a normal operating?
Well, yeah, but I don't know that normal operating people do that when they're going to be right next to a creek because they just take, they're thinking, we'll just go down there together.
Can I speak now?
Huh?
Can I speak now?
On this topic?
On this topic, you probably shouldn't.
I was just going to, I was going to tell you what happens daily.
Yeah, well, then that's my thing is, some people are responsible people and other people aren't responsible people. And it's not the responsible people that trespass and destroy habitat. And so you have to sometimes put in mitigation so that people will take care of the non-responsible people. I understand, I mean, if I had a dog and I'm going camping, I'm going to take some water for my dog. If you're camping right next to a creek, there's going to be a lot of people who don't because the dog's going to spend half his time playing in the creek. And horses, you know, not necessarily any different. And so if they already have a problem with horses trampling the property, and now you're going to just put more horses on there, you're not going to remove the issue with horses trampling the property to get to the river. You're just going to exacerbate it, so. Anyway, but yeah, that would, that essentially addresses every single concern I have, other than there wasn't one member of the public. that essentially addresses every single concern I have, other than there wasn't one member of the public that voted in favor of it. So all the safety issues would be addressed.
I got no more to say. Shall we move on?
Yep. I guess we're off into new business land, if you're ready for that.
So in part of the signing of our commission formation agreement for the new Hood River White Salmon Bridge Authority, we need to appoint three members as well as two alternates. So I'm trying, what we've been trying to do is follow the same in Oregon as Washington. And so today, Oregon is opening up their one month application window. And then the city is going to make the application. So I wanted to have this conversation with you so that we can.
It's just got a break in that mic somewhere. It lowered another inch. I'll do it again. I'll just move forward to speak.
Okay, so we need to accept those applications, have interviews and make those appointments. So my goal was is to have us open those applications today for the nominations to be made one month from now, giving the and directing staff to send a letter to the cities, giving them three weeks to come up with their names so that we can then set up the interviews and make the interviews because we have to have it.
So was the plan to have White Salmon have one nominee, Binge and have another nominee? And then we'd have a county at large nominee? Is that the plan or?
Well, so there's, there's five positions, right? And so the way it's written is, is that they will submit their names of who they want. And then we will take that into strong consideration when we decide if we wanted to.
The overall five.
Of the overall five.
They don't get to submit names, they don't get to just submit names for one, they can submit names for the entire five.
Submit, submit whatever names they want. It's, it's our job and duty to determine who goes on those applications. There's been, you know, in all of our by-state work group discussions, there's been a lot of statements about ensuring that there's continuity. And so having enough people that are still on it that, that have been on the by-state working groups, we don't lose all that knowledge and all the trips to DC and Olympia and Salem. So the idea is to have a core, but then to bring more people on. And, and as we move from the financing stage to the building stage, we might have different people on there that have different expertise. So that's just kind of the idea.
Is there qualifications with this application?
It's, it's our normal application.
Do
Okay.
Do county at large that might be interested that do they get a position to apply or do we only look at the ones that are given to us by the city? County at large, anybody can?
Yeah, we, we, we're opening our application too. So it's county at large, the cities are going to put forward their recommendations, but we're going to take our own.
And how many will we pick out of these?
So we will, we pick all of them and there's five, there's three people and then two alternates. And then I guess the alternates are kind of probably number one, number two at large.
There's lots of interested people.
Yeah, is there a way that we can publicize this thing in the, your district, I guess, it's mainly your district, even a little bit of yours, not mine. Can we get it on some Facebook pages over there or?
Sure.
Something like that to make sure the whole community knows about it and they can't say we didn't know about it?
I don't see why not. I mean.
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
I, there's no real reason I see of putting it in the Gold Bell Sentinel, you know, but Columbia Gorge News. So we did talk about having Columbia Gorge News run an article and I'm not sure where that's at. So that, you know, because Oregon, so by signing it up for Hood River and us at the same time, then one article in Columbia Gorge News would hit both sides.
If, I, I'd say if they're willing to write an article, I'm in favor of it. If they want a $600 ad. I don't know that that's needed.
No, well, once in, so I don't know if you want a motion or if this is just directing staff.
I would say it's directing staff and move ahead. We've cleared the board, you have board consent, I believe.
We've already passed the thing. So we will just, we will be making our, it's the 16th today. We will be appointing, choosing the members on June 20th. So we should set the application, the recommendations from the cities and the application deadline for the 13th. Does that make sense? And that gives us a week to review all the applications.
Yeah. And then do we need to make a note for staff to make sure that's on the agenda for that week in June? Whichever staff's going to be here at that point in time. You got it, okay. It likes to be tilted over here.
Other than that. Did you want to have a discussion on FSAC tonight? I know during public comment, I mentioned that I've got the, the hearing on House Bill 3033 tonight. Is that what it is?
People want to talk about FSAC, I'm fine talking about FSAC.
I had a chance to review your, your letter. I just didn't know if the board wanted to have testimony from the board as whole or individuals.
To me, like I said, every time we testify, whether it's, oh, radio. Whether it's on the radio or like me speaking at city council last night, we're testifying in behalf of us personally. Unless somebody says you're speaking on behalf of the board.
That's what I was asking.
So I never, ever say that I'm speaking on behalf of the board unless I've got your permission, like kind of we did earlier in executive. That I know I have your permission, then I'll say this is the board's recommendations. But I always try to make it clear that, I mean, I guess I'd say it's kind of brings up the radio anytime we're all sitting there talking on the radio. And one person gives an answer, they're not speaking for the board, they're only speaking for themselves. Because there's things that I might say that you disagree with when we're on the radio or that he might say that I disagree with. So we're all just speaking for ourselves and now maybe the radio wasn't aware of that. But I did respond back to them today and made mention of that as all three of us speak on their radio, we're all just speaking for ourselves. Unless we're absolutely in unison on the same topic.
The first meeting we had, we did it separately and submitted comments separately and then spoke separately. And then I think following suit, I just assumed that's what we were doing again.
Right.
And it was a timely matter, so I put comments in and I'll speak just a short amount. And I think Dan did the same thing, but is there something you would like us to present as a board since you have another meeting tonight?
I, I mean, I was just, I haven't seen what your comments are, but you know, it, it does go a long ways when you say this is the board's position. You know, whatever it is, it's, it's one thing to say this is my position.
And if you've crafted something, one of us would be glad to do it. Or we can craft something now.
Right, but the hard thing of coming in of this is the board's position is on this topic, the board is not necessarily in unison on each issue. We might be all in unison on the SEPA, it needs to be a full EIS. I think, I think we're all in unison on that. But when you get to the other points that I might want to talk about or that she might want to talk about, it may not be in unison. So I don't know that we can get a you know, necessarily a board directive as speaking for the board on a topic that's not 100% unison.
So I guess I would come over the top and say, even though it may not be 100% unison, I still respect the decision of the board. And the board's position is.
And the board carries weight.
And that carries weight. And so whether I agree or disagree doesn't matter, it's still the board's position. And if I wanted to have a minority report, so be it about something, who cares? But we have turned in the documentation that we originally turned in, which I, I have a hard time with that because we asked for this other meeting to give us more time to prepare. And then our staff went and knocked it out of the park and prepared both of them and for the first one, we're resubmitting it. And so I, I just think it would be nice that if the board had something to say. And, and you know, whether it's, you know, Dan's statement, that's, that's fine, but it's the board's position. And so I just wanted to throw that out there as an option, just to add more weight for the discussion this evening. And if not, it's fine. I
Yeah, I'm.
But I have no problem with what you wrote here, Dan, and that's all I was saying.
As speaking for the board or clarification? Or just read it off the way it's worded? I say, I do understand the board carries more weight, but when each commissioner testifies what they testify to and we're all predominantly on the same page, barring a few little things.
Listening to each other, we all have spoke in favor of a full EIS, each one of us.
On that issue.
But that was, that was the previous, this is the land use turn, or the land use consistency here.
Right, and my, my thinking on what's the strong point of the land use consistency may be different than your thinking or his thinking. So, yeah, I mean, I, I don't mind saying I speak for the Board of Commissioners, but you guys would have to say that it's okay before I ever said that. And I think Jake, you weren't here, but in the Dave days, I would never speak for the board without coming in and getting permission from my seatmates on what it is. And usually when that happens, I type it in advance so I can read it word for word, so they know I'm not ad libbing anything. Because when you're ad libbing, you have a tendency to potentially ad lib something that they might not be able to support. So I'm, I'm open, I don't care either way.
Let me read Dan's letter again.
Okay, I was, I was going to say, have you read the letter?
Yeah, I've read it once.
I passed it, then she passed it off. What is this, something else to say?
Do, do you have one? Lori, for us to read?
I didn't print it, Jake. Basically, it just reiterated what I had submitted for the first meeting as testimony. Choring up the idea that because of some incomplete information and further studies needed and more technical advice from certain areas, that a full EIS was necessary. And then I expanded a little bit on the fisheries issue because I hadn't seen anywhere where they talked about the, I asked that they be sure that a study is completed for the aquifer connectivity because of turbidity and water quantity to the Little Clicktat and the Big One. Because that is a recharge area, that whole plateau is a recharge area for those. It all, it all goes downhill. And so it's important to know that we keep up our water quantity and our water quality for Mid Columbia Steel Hub.
So did you speak directly to the land use?
Yes.
Decision, the consistency?
Yes, and I noted it under the part where they had talked about fisheries. I gave the citation of their study on different things that they needed to expand that more and a full EIS was necessary to do that. That was my comment for tonight.
Okay, you want to take a chance to read this? I think those are really good points, Commissioners, all of them.
It's just something that I felt was.
We just got an email, they passed the Blake fix.
I figured they would.
Mr. Christopher, how many of yours? I've got, I've got one mixed in. Got everything mixed in together here on the Davis paperwork.
You got an email that they did fix the Blake. I figured they would because now what they fixed it with is a whole nother story because the Democrats wanted it to be a misdemeanor and the Republicans wanted it to be a gross misdemeanor. Which, again, it's a matter of whether you get one day a litter patrol or two. Actually, no, misdemeanor, you wouldn't get any punishment. Gross misdemeanor, you might get a litter pick up. So it's a matter of what they negotiated to, but because yes, if they, if they didn't and you had 20 or 38 different counties setting, you know, different codes, I'm pretty sure the state Supreme Court would get involved in that one just because you're
Gross misdemeanor.
Having different laws as you cross county boundaries. Could be interesting.
I was going to refer to such cases.
So the, the rumor around Olympia was that bill was a done deal. And it was going to get done as a gross misdemeanor and everything was hunky dory and they stopped literally debating it three weeks in advance. Because it was just a done deal. And then apparently those in power and those in control knew it was dead a month beforehand, just didn't tell anybody else. Until the last day, so it, it just fell through the cracks, which then infuriated the governor. Because he wanted a fix. So at least it's fixed, even if it's not right, it's a step in the right direction, they can work on it again next year.
No offense, I'd like to keep it separate.
Okay, no, no problem.
And if you guys would like to craft one more small statement and Dan take it with him from the board, I, I would approve that totally. I think it should speak to the fact that we are all in agreement that a full EIS is necessary.
Yeah, but I don't believe this, this hearing is not about a SEPA review. This hearing is about a land use consistency. Last hearing was about a SEPA review.
Okay.
And I think we each spoke on our own about the importance of a full EIS. This one is about, is Carriage Solar Project consistent with our land use as deemed in our comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinances? And are potentially moratorium and whatnot like that. So it's all about consistency, not SEPA or fish or trees or you could probably get in the ag or something, that might be a consistency, but then you'd have to point out where it's inconsistent in our zoning or something. Did we get a new one?
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't.
So no, that's fine.
That works for me.
Yeah, normally if I'm, if I'm going to do something speaking on behalf of the board, I would say I'm Clickitack County Commissioner and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Clickitack County Board of Commissioners and make it crystal clear. And I would hope we would all do the same.
Are we going to?
Marty, I'll miss Marty.
Yeah.
Maybe we should take a copy of it, send it to.
It's something like hefty paper, too.
Yeah, it is.
It's like almost.
Almost cardboard?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. If I have anything else for the list.
Uh, I know I had something else for pending, I just can't remember what the heck it was. Look at my emails, I think it was there. I see attorney client communication in our email, if you want to.
I've taken a look at it.
I haven't read it.
Oh, that was one thing I wanted.
Let me make a note.
Never mind. I can actually remember.
Got to wait.
So the governance meeting for Skagit County is next Wednesday. I tried to get out of going to DC Monday to Wednesday and that we were unsuccessful yesterday since we're trying to get all these congressionally directed spending. So if one of my seatmates would like to go to the governance meeting and speak for Clickitack County, the board, I am more than happy to have one of you speak for the board and the relationship with, we've had with Skagit County and what it's meant to us. I think that goes a long ways in front of other commissioners and city councilors when they're making these really big decisions.
And I have business at Fisheries next week, Department of Fish and Wildlife in Olympia, so I can, I'll be up that way next week. And I can pick which day I'm going to do it.
Oh, you think you could make it? That would be, it's Wednesday during the day. 11:00 AM, I think.
Okay.
Solid Waste Governance Board is at 1:00 PM. The Timber Counties Caucus meeting is at 1:00 PM as well. And if you got to make a choice, I would definitely choose to
Yeah.
To go to, yeah, Skagit. And it's, it's in the Commissioners Hearing Room. And it's, it's in the Commissioners Hearing Room.
You have consent to see it?
Okay, you're okay with that?
For all in unison debate.
Oh, I see.
Trying my hardest.
Okay. Perfect.
No, what I wanted to write down, I wrote down mill property. So Economic Development Natural Resources came to me earlier and wanted. Kind of an update on the board's discussion of separating the mill property and did we want the one hundred feet, two hundred, three, three hundred feet kind of thing? So I passed on what I believe the board agreed on, and then I said I would come back and double check with you guys to make sure I told them the right thing. And I believe I wanted three hundred feet on the creek, but you only wanted two hundred feet on the creek, so we settled on two hundred feet on the creek, because I'm not a stickler.
Two hundred feet each direction or two hundred?
Well, they wanted one hundred total, two hundred total, three hundred total.
I thought it was. So fifty, because usually you only do it by side.
Well, whatever they, yeah, they have it by side.
And were we not waiting for Margaret to come back? They were gonna tell us what their fish program.
Right, but they were, they're, we're looking at if we do subdivide which areas we subdivide. So. The plan was the creek would be one of them and I thought I, we were at two hundred as a negotiation. And then the little carve out piece of property at the parking lot would be a second, a second property standalone, little corner. For building or whatever, and then the PUD piece carve out on the riverside. And then the force side is everything that's not in the creek. On the other side, all that concrete plateau over there.
We need to make sure that we can get sixty foot legal access and everything from that other side before I'd wanna agree to that, because you might have to cross.
This is, they're going to be looking into whatever we think we want to do. And that's the four parcels that I thought we wanted to parcel out if we so chose to parcel out.
Parcel it, right. So that was, you know, my, my goal two years ago was to get ahead of this, let the community try to figure out what they want to see with it, so that this would be going. Right now, it feels like the, the tribe and Fisheries is. Leading the path versus the community leading the path of what they would want to see through there.
To me. If the Phil, Fisheries is willing to take the creek and stick it two hundred feet, which keeps it farther away from the one potential issue area. Because three hundred puts it right up into that potential issue area. Two hundred, they would then have the creek, we could auction the property out in front. For a business potential that might want a small piece without owning a bunch of other things. PUD would have the section they want and we would still essentially be able to have the section next to the creek. For community, whatever they wanted to do.
So I guess, have you, have you guys walked the creek up through there before? Did you go down and like walk up the creek where, where they went through and?
Not much of a creek, but yeah.
It sure can be, no, so, okay, so I'm showing you right here. The, the beautiful part, you know, where I've seen all the fish at in that creek where we actually went through and worked on it and then planted trees and planted the. The root balls and the, everything across, that's really gorgeous. That's seventy feet and that's eighty feet right there. And that's through that section that we went through, you know, and, and naturalized it. So if, if you've got, and that's, that's. No, they naturalized.
We don't naturalize nothing, Mother Nature naturalizes.
Well, after twenty years, Mother Nature's grown through and naturalized it. But, so what I'm saying though is if, if it's eighty feet and, and seventy feet and it's got good habitat, that's where the fish are, that's. Do we really want to set it at two hundred when, you know, you've got, and that's from, that's from crown to crown right now, right? That's, that's not, you know, we're stem to stem, that's.
Yeah, but even if you have it at two hundred. Eighty-five percent of the time, the creek is gonna stay from crown to crown.
What my concern.
Yeah, the hundred.
Jake, is what is the requirement gonna be for setbacks for that?
That's, that's zoned. Industrials, so the setback should be fifty feet. So that would be a hundred foot total, so fifty feet each side.
Yeah.
And so if we're looking at that direction and, I mean, if you could create, I'm just thinking no matter what you do through this area. If you figure fifty feet, you know, industrial area setback and you have that going through that whole section through here and you. Kind of naturalize that to what this good section is. And you'll have a forty foot wide, you know, bed liner, you know, that comes down and then you can have. Trees and everything on the outside of it, that's a, that's your buffer and everything is what it is. That maximizes the potential use of the property while ensuring that the flow gets through there.
Yeah, but I don't think that's the best thing for the fish either, because if you had a wider area that could. Eb and flow and the stream can, can change courses instead of being pushed through a chute. You're not gonna be scouring the reds. Where you're gonna be.
If you, that's an alluvial fan and in high water, if you take that out. If you remove the chute, that thing's a fire hose when it wants to be. Go.
So you want a hundred feet as well?
No, I don't, I don't want a hundred feet, I want protected property left there that the community can deal with. But what are we gonna be forced from the people who manage water, you know, Department of Ecology and everybody else? What are we gonna be, we're gonna have to do there? I know the tribe was talking about removing.
Because if they have their piece, they're, they're all within the flood plain. And the setback and the whatever, we don't have anything to do with it.
If it is industrial, so it gives us fifty feet, that's great.
We'll be far outside of fifty feet regardless of whether we do a hundred foot or two hundred foot. Our piece will be well outside of any buffer. Because they don't just want the hundred feet strip right through the middle, they're gonna take the whole thing. Right down.
So.
It's just a matter of how wide they're gonna put the creek.
They can't take anything technically, it's our property, it's okay, and so it's what, what we want to see done there. In, I mean, I don't think that, that building a fat alluvial fan there because then everything will go subsurface. If anything, what you need to do is likely build what they have there with these checks, kind of like it has a check dams, so that you can keep the water in that area.
So that sounds more like we would be dividing that property up so we have our boundary along the creek and just enter into some sort of. Maintenance agreement with the tribe, so they, you know, if they still want to do projects or something, but it sounds like we would have to keep it in our hands to keep it in industrial, to have that setback.
There wouldn't be anything left to do, left to build on. The south side of the creek, other than that little piece out at the parking lot. So maintaining county ownership of a fifty foot stretch of ground or a hundred foot stretch of ground that you can't do anything with. I don't understand the purpose of that, the fifty feet or a hundred feet you're giving up on the other side of the creek. Might be taking a piece out of something that the community can actually do something with, but one side is, is, I won't say worthless ground. But once you put that creek development in there regardless of the width of the creek, it's not gonna make any difference, you're only really dealing with the. North side of the, of the creek and how big of a border you want to make. But again, I, I just kind of look at it that the absolute professionals come in with a recommendation. And how do we feel like we're more professional than them that we second guess and undermine the rest recommendation? I'm not a, I mean, I'm, I'm very fishy. But I don't consider myself a.
Who are you saying with the recommendation?
Well, when Fisheries came in and gave their, their presentation, they wanted three hundred feet. Ideally, they want three hundred feet, two hundred feet will work, but ideally three hundred feet.
So if you, if you do the, what we have for. There'd still be one point five four acres and you go with the minimum. Okay? If you do three hundred feet. Each side.
Oh yeah, if you go each side, I was thinking one, one fifteen.
So if you go two hundred feet each side.
Well, the creek wouldn't necessarily be in the middle where the creek is now.
You would figure. On that, because everything gets taken except for this. Two hundred feet each side. You'd be left with point two two acres, so. Ten thousand square foot.
For what?
Yeah, from where the, if you went where the creek is now, you do two hundred foot.
It's not the map they provided us. It shows the actual creek and the actual what we would do if it went out. There was much more than point two two acres over there on the side. I can get behind two hundred feet, I can't get below.
Two hundred feet each side? Two hundred feet total?
I believe it's two hundred feet total.
So a hundred foot each side?
I believe it's two hundred feet total.
You get two hundred feet each side, it's really.
So.
That's absolutely huge, you can run the white salmon down that thing.
So you want in a.
The creek bed would be two hundred feet wide.
You want the creek bed to be two hundred feet wide?
The, where the creek could flow if it wanted to flow there ever, it's, the crown to crown is two hundred. I believe is what they presented. Do we have another presentation?
I think we can just go back and watch the video, or was that on Thursday?
You can ask Margaret, Margaret to.
Or just, can you get the PDF? Get the, get the PDF for the presentation?
I think we sent her away for asking for more information, she was, yeah, and she was gonna come back.
And see if she can find someone to. Take over the property. If they want to do it, they just don't want any responsibility.
Yes.
She was gonna bring us more of what her.
She was gonna go and see if she could find any groups that would be willing to.
I guess my, my one issue is, is that in Clickitack County, the, the zone that has the low, least amount of land available is industrial. And so when you have the setbacks that are already currently enshrined in setbacks and buffers that are already enshrined in the. The SMP and the Shorelines Management Act and Critical Areas Ordinance. Do you really want to widen those in an area where you have very little amount of developable land for those uses left? Now, if we want to rezone it from industrial to something else, commercial, residential. Totally fine with those setbacks, but if it's gonna be industrial, that's.
So then when we have our pieces and they're zoned industrial, what does that allow us to do there then? Can you do like commercial buildings? Sales, buildings that people can rent?
Everything that's in the industrial zone that's permitted outright and then you have all the conditional uses.
Because I haven't looked at it.
And then.
Probably no residential?
No, not in industrial, those are conflicting land uses.
Okay.
But we also have, so right now with the agreement, right, that with the agreement that we had with. Health, ecology, that you can only use industrial, because it's cleaned up to an industrial level. If you want to change the use, you need to go and do further studies, which, you know, it's been thirty years, most of that contamination's gone and you won't even be able to find it.
Especially looking if Richard was online, because he at least could have brought down the map with that creek bed and whatnot that he was showing me when they were discussing that. So, but I don't see him online there. I mean, we can always reach up and get a small little presentation from them next week or Thursday if you want to sneak them in for ten minutes somewhere.
Yeah, it's fine, Thursday.
As I said, we might get ten minutes, so he's, I mean, I don't think it's gonna take five minutes to show us what the designation is and that would give him a confirmation, so. We'll see how it goes, see if he's around on Thursday, I guess. Um, but yeah, no, that was my only thing, because I wanted to clarify. And we're still not clarified, so. I don't have anything else.
Okay. I won't be here Tuesday for the meeting. I think I have, I don't know, well, adding in the three hours, I will try to log in if there's anything that's on the agenda that you'd like me to try to log in for. I can just call in while I'm sitting there waiting for the next meeting with senators or representatives.
And the other thing I do want to point out that at least why I'm chairman. If we have anything on the agenda that may be a contentious. Or non-unanimous or whatever vote, my, my opinion would be to hold that over until the next week if possible. So that everybody has an opinion and, and gets a chance to weigh in, so if we do see anything on the agenda, know that I'll. Be pushing to hold it over until you're here.
And I will not be here for workshop this week, but I'm crafting all my notes for each subject and I'll send them to Lee for you guys, so you know.
Well, this is interesting.
It was a surprise for my daughter and. Light tickets and.
Happy Mother's Day?
Yeah.
Other Mother's Day can't exist on Tuesdays or Thursdays.
I already told her that and thank goodness she didn't do Tuesday, I'd be like, nope, sorry, but.
Tuesdays are actually better than Thursdays. Because Thursdays, Tuesdays are kind of, you know. Pay the bills, get things done, move on. Two people are here, you can move on. Thursdays are, we need board directive on which way somebody wants to go on this issue, that issue or everything else, Thursdays are darn near more important than Tuesdays.
I've looked at it and.
I hope you have a great time.
I'd love to, I'm sorry, yes, have a great time wherever you're going.
Arizona.
Oh. Need a vacation.
You'll probably be cooler there than here.
No, my in-laws moved there.
There'll be a pool.
It was a hundred and two degrees on their front porch the other day.
You've earned it.
Thank you very much.
What, you earned a sub?
I promise not to buy a condo.
Bye. With that, Mr. Chairman, having no more business before us, I would make a motion to adjourn. Noting, oh God, where'd it go, noting that. We have a no radio, right? No radio, noting that. We have a work scot scheduled for nine AM Thursday, May eighteenth. And the Board of Commissioners will also be attending, one or more of the Board of Commissioners will be attending the Energy Facility Site Evaluation Council's. Land Use Consistency Hearing Regarding the Carringer Solar Project tonight from five to seven PM. Noting that that hearing will be virtual only. With that, my, my chairman is to, or my motion is to adjourn.
Chairman? Okay, discussion, if you guys don't have anything for us, obviously I should ask first, I hear nothing. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning, say hi.
Hi.
All right, my motion passes. Thank you everyone on Zoom land.